Hello and good evening, everybody. It is with great pleasure and privilege that I sit before you all today. On this beautiful Tuesday, April 16th, I welcome all of you in here and then all of you watching us at home. We welcome you and thank you. So today, we're starting our city council meeting. I opened the meeting. The time is now six, I have 6:30.
That's good.
I have 6:30. And we'll start with our invocation by Wade Rush from West Main Baptist Church, followed by our pledge of allegiance by Mayor Pro Tem Pete Crisp.
Thank you, council, for inviting me to lead in prayer. And will you join me in prayer? Do you have any, Father, Lord, we just come to you tonight and we thank you for this time of season of Easter that we celebrate the resurrection of your son, Jesus Christ. And because of that resurrection, we have hope and salvation. And Father, I just pray for this leadership of the city, that you would just give them wisdom, that you would give them discernment, Lord, in everything that's on the agenda. Father, that your will would be done, Lord, here in the city and in this community, and that everything would be done for your glory and for your kingdom. Father, we just pray for this time, that you would bless it. Lord, give us peace, give us unity in every decision that we make, and we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
If you'll please turn and face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. Agenda item number two, citizen comments and public announcements. And it looks like we do not have citizen comments today, Ms. Hody. That's correct?
Pardon me?
Looks like we do have one.
I'll get a copy for the doctor. Okay. No, it's the next one. Thank you. All righty. So any citizen who has a request for city services and/or other items of concern which cannot be approved or otherwise resolved by the city manager may choose to address the council. You will have three minutes to express your position. Any complaints and/or discussion about individuals, personnel, council members, city staff, or other persons would be out of order and will not be heard by the city council at this time. Charges or complaints about specific individuals shall be presented in writing to the city manager. All complaints of this nature must be signed and dated by the individual filing the complaint and will be addressed pursuant to Alice' personnel policies. Although council cannot take specific action on citizen comments topics due to legal requirements, they will hear the topic and council may have the item placed on a future agenda for action or to refer to the item to a board, commission, or committee, or refer the item to staff or study your conclusion. When you come up to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. At this time, we'll listen to Citizen Tony Sexton, if you'll come forward.
How y'all doing tonight? I want to thank you for your time. I'm here tonight to propose a joint venture between the city and the county on doing sports fields behind the natorium. The city's been deeded to 38-plus acres. We haven't been able to use it at any time for whatever reason. I believe with a joint venture between the county and the city, it would offset the prices and the costs for both the county and the city. I have the original agreement between Lattice Creek LLC and the city, which was given that 38 acres by the developer. I've also got preliminary numbers to discuss with y'all individually or as a group. I've talked to the construction company as well, and they're more than happy to come to Alice and give a presentation on either way we decide to go, whether it be a football field or for four baseball fields, whichever. And I would really appreciate y'all's cooperation in this. And y'all can call me, you have access to my number at any time. I'm willing to meet with each of y'all individually, like I said, or as a group. Thank you. Y'all have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Sexton.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, public announcements. Mr. Molina?
No, I'm not.
Mr. Crisp?
Just, you know, to the community as a whole, thank you for the community coming together and doing all the projects, Ms. Anthea, and some of these others that had it. We have a couple of more things going on, including the baseball alumni Easter. There's a couple of others. And when you're out there traveling this weekend for the Easter holiday, just stay safe and get home and enjoy your weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Burke?
No.
Ms. Carrasco?
Just to wish everyone a happy Easter and anyone traveling, safe trip and God bless.
Okay. I would like to wish our very own council member and his wife a happy anniversary. Mr. Molina, how many years?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Kudos. The institution of marriage is a beautiful thing, especially 25 years. That's very, very commendable.
Yes, it is. And he's here at the meeting.
And he's here.
Dedication.
A lot of you are sorry.
We're not even.
But he owes you. We also have a couple of proclamations to present to our arts and our schools, for Arts in Our Schools Month, and also for our Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month, which we are still in that month of child abuse awareness, too. So don't lose sight of those things. If you see something, say something, please. Take the stand that a lot of people don't take. And if you stand alone, it's okay. In the end, it's going to be better for everybody involved. So on that note, I would like our Arts in Our Schools Month recipients to come forward. Council, if y'all would like to join me?
Sure.
That'd be great.
Sorry.
Bye-bye. Hi. I'm so proud of y'all. Thank you very much. Thank you. Come to us, you're part of our schools. All right. So proclamation for Arts in Our Schools Month. Whereas March has been designated Arts in Our Schools Month and by the Council of Art Education as Youth Art Month, and whereas art education in City of Alice schools includes four separate and distinct disciplines, band, choir, theater, arts, and art, each with its own body of knowledge and skills, and whereas the arts have been part of life from the very beginning and are an inseparable part of the human journey, describing, defining, and deepening the human experience, and whereas the arts are everywhere in our lives, adding depth and dimension to the environment we live in and shaping our experience daily, and whereas all students participating in arts education courses benefit from the skills and processes developed through the arts and apply those skills in a variety of disciplines and settings, no matter their intended career path, and whereas arts education contributes to students' development through heightened skills in listening, understanding human experiences, creative problem-solving, communicating effectively, as well as analyzing nonverbal communication, reading, self-expression, imagination of humankind, creativity, and whereas arts education innovatively ignites and engages learners personally and enhances the social and emotional morale, as well as the quality of all students and all cultures by helping develop self-confidence and self-reliance. Whereas art education is essential for all students in Alice as part of a well-rounded education. Now therefore be it resolved, in one word, the mayor of the City of Alice does hereby proclaim on Tuesday, April 16th, 2019, as Arts in Our Schools Month, and urges all citizens to celebrate and acknowledge every day, but especially in March, that arts education is an essential part of every student's education in Alice Independent School District and the City of Alice. This is personal to me because I, too, was a theater teacher. So kudos, 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 Ms. Cotton, for all you have done. And you have stuck it for how many years?
Twenty-nine.
Wow. I did it for five and I was like, woo! Congratulations and thank you all so much. I present this to you all.
Thank you all so much.
Yes, well deserved. Congratulations. Very well deserved. Oh, hi. Thank you. No, our pleasure. Awesome. Choir, that. Our Purple Door, come on up. Another fabulous group of people, amazing, doing amazing, great things, and I can speak the full rest of the hour on what you guys do. It is huge admiration to y'all, very, very much. So today's proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month. Sexual assault and violence impacts women, children, and men of every age, background, sexual orientation, and belief. Whereas in the United States, one in three women and one in six men experience some form of contact sexual violence in their lifetime. And whereas 6.3 million Texans have experienced some form of sexual assault in their lifetime. And whereas two in five women and one in five men in Texas have been sexually assaulted. And whereas the majority of the perpetrators are someone the survivor knows. The Texas 90% of all children victims are assaulted by someone they know. 80% of all adult victims are sexually assaulted by someone they know. And whereas studies confirm the undetected rapist is a serial hunter and serial offender. Seventeen percent of sexual assaults are planned in advance. And whereas in the USA, the majority of the sexual assaults occurs in the following: 55% at or near the victim's home, 15% in an open public place, 12% at or near a relative's home, 10% in a public area, and 8% on school property. And whereas 91% of Texas sexual assault victims did not report to law enforcement. And whereas fear of not being believed, self-blame, and concerns about how the justice system will handle the incident are among the reasons that sexual violence is generally not reported. And whereas sexual assault and violence can have a variety of devastating effects on the victim, therefore, we ask all citizens to lose the ribbon because prevention is action. Ending sexual violence begins with youth. We bring our agency partners, our allies and advocates, and our community to start with this and act by empowering our survivors, holding perpetrators accountable for their violence, and challenging a culture that perpetuates sexual assault and violence. The Purple Door serves all victims and survivors of sexual violence in the coastal band. In 2018, the Purple Door has served 2,150 victims and provided 66,690 services. The Purple Door provides 24/7 safe emergency shelter, safety planning and case management, crisis counseling and intervention, legal advocacy, and a 24-hour hotline at 1-800-580-HURT, H-U-R-T. All services are confidential, free of charge, and available to those staying at the shelter and those residing elsewhere in the community. It is a mission of the Purple Door to empower the community and those affected by domestic violence and sexual assault to transition to a safe and healthy environment. Now therefore pursuant to the powers vested in me as mayor of City of Alice, I, Jolene B. Vanover, hereby proclaim April is Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month. You see something, say something, please. Thank you all so very much for all y'all do. Keep on keeping on. Thank you all so much.
Mayor.
Yes, and so then we have another announcement. Our city manager, Mr. Asparza?
Okay, on the garbage collection. Also, want to let the citizens know that we're going to be closed on Friday in observance of Good Friday, our solid waste department or our garbage collection for Friday. If you're scheduled for Friday, that's going to be picked up on Thursday. If your garbage is usually picked up on Thursday, it'll be picked up tomorrow on Wednesday. So the city will be closed on Friday. However, our city clerk's office will be open from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM for the sole purpose of receiving any application from voters in person for a ballot by mail. So they'll be here on the second floor, open from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM on Friday.
Thank you, Mr. Asparza.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Ms. Hody. All right, agenda item number three. Here's status report from city manager concerning criminal justice department and in-car camera grant rankings and awards.
Mayor, just want to let you guys know that we did get an award for $43,326, and that's for replacing a portion, not all our vehicles, but replacing in-car mobile camera systems. And we are applying for another similar grant. We were scalable, so they were running out of money, so they did ask us if we could scale it back, and we were able to, so that's what allowed us to get the award of $43,000.
Very good. Agenda item number four, discuss and hear presentation from Dr. Carl Scarborough, superintendent of school, on upcoming AISD's bond election.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. On behalf of Alice ISD, I just want to say again, thank you to our city and to our community members present, Mayor Vanover, esteemed council members, city manager Asparza, thank you so much. What I'm here to do today is present on the proposal that the school district has put forth for May 4th, and we call the bond election. And there's two basic parts of this presentation. The first part is the pre-planning, and I'm going to kind of fly through that. We have quite a few slides. We do have copies for the audience, if you'd like to take one with you. And so I'm going to go through this as quickly as possible in observance at the time. And then the part two is really about what the bond is about. So go ahead and get started. This doesn't look like it's in the PowerPoint mode. Go ahead. One second. And so let's, this doesn't look like this thing's working here. Let's turn it, make sure it's on here. All right, let's see if we can get this thing going. So this first picture is just our kids in action, and what a beautiful display of our kids tonight about the arts. So in the part one of this presentation is really about the pre-bond planning, and like I said, I'm going to fly through this part. This bond proposal just didn't happen overnight. There was many months of planning that took place, and especially around the month of November and December and January, we put a task force together, and we've had over 80 people from our city, to include city leaders, county leaders, grandparents, parents, staff members, to come together, business leaders, as part of this task force, to help us look at what our facility state was, what our finances looked like. And so we had a lot of people that had some input on this. During that time, in December, January, and February, we had a series of meetings with the task force that we actually went out and visited schools. We looked at the state of the facilities, and you can see over those weeks, we visited those schools that are reflected on PowerPoint. The considerations that the task force looked at were safety and security, the learning environment, the age of the facilities, the enrollment. We looked at location, transportation, community space, really around the curriculum alignment, instructional alignment. Those are all things that were considered, among other things. These are just some numbers about the state of Alice and the enrollment. We currently have nine campuses, two that are closed. We are excited about Mary R. Garcia. We just went into a partnership with Community Action Corp of South Texas, and they are actually in the building using the Mary R. Garcia's. Here's the historical enrollment over the last 10 years. The task force really looked at these numbers and realized that over the last six years, we've had quite a decrease in the enrollment in our school district. So looking at our campuses, the nine that we currently occupy, we have the current enrollments as of November of last year, the estimated capacity, and the age of those buildings. And you can see that in 1954 is our oldest building, which is Salazar, 58, Memorial, 1963 Hillcrest, and so forth. But most of our schools have been built since 2003. The task force considered eight options. These eight options were kicked around. They looked at the benefits and the challenges, and they narrowed it to three, and from those three options narrowed it to one, and that was what was presented to the school board February 7th. The task force will continue in their role of helping the district with facilities oversight and any potential projects. Part two is more now about what is the bond? And on February 7th, 2019, our school board unanimously approved through call and order for bond election for May 4th. And this is the proposition, as it reads and will be on the ballot. The issuance of $20,790,000 of bonds to finance the construction and improvements and renovations, too, and equipping of existing buildings, school buildings, in the Alice Independent School District, and the levying, the tax and payment thereof. As part of the bond consideration, we as a district are paying off debt this year. And when we pay that debt off, it will effectively lower the tax rate on the INS side by seven cents. And so a consideration was if we do go for a bond, that we wanted to make sure that the tax rate for the school district stayed the same. This is just a little bit about the election days, of course, early voting is, gosh, less than one week away now, April 22nd and Election Day, May 4th, at those particular sites. We do encourage as many of our citizens to go out and vote, vote for the city and for the school district elections. And as part of our responsibility as a school district is make sure that everybody's informed. And so we have done, this is session number 30 in bond presentations. We are also doing a mail-out, and we are going to continue doing some additional sessions. Of course, I think everybody in the audience knows what a bond is, but basically, we're asking the community to say, to let us borrow some money to do some projects, and I'll show you those projects here shortly. This bond amount, the state will assist, the school district will pay in $6,237,000 of the $20,790,000, and our share will be $14,553,000. Scope of the work. For the most part, for three elementary schools that you see listed above, Noonan, Sines, and Shaller, we are proposing to add a gymnasium to each of those elementary schools, four classrooms, an entry security wall, and some additional parking space. Noonan, Sines, and Shaller will become pre-K to five campuses if the bond passes. Here are some schematics, some drawings, and I'll just flip through these quickly. These are architect renditions, so they're not exact, but these are what we're hoping to try to go forward with after May 4th. So you can see here at Sines, additional parkings in the red, and four additional classrooms, and gymnasium in purplish-blue color. Shaller, same thing. Those three schools were built in 2003. They're self-contained buildings, and they were built to be added on to, and so we felt like this construction would be more easily accomplished. These are just some early renditions of the outside of the classrooms, the gymnasiums at those three elementaries. Another rendition inside of the gym. These gymnasiums also, on the far end, you can see a little entryway. They will be equipped with restrooms in these gymnasiums. Just a rendition of the inside of the classrooms. We will model the same classrooms that we have square-footage-wise in these three buildings and extend out. William Adams Middle School will become a 6th through 8th campus if the bond is passed. We will add 6th grade, and in order to do that, we would have to build 16 additional classrooms, which we will house the core content classrooms in and some elective classrooms. And we will also add girls' and boys' restrooms. This is a two-story rendition. The task force was pretty unanimous in saying, let's go with a one-story, and that's what we're showing in this next slide. And you can see in between the current 8th grade and 7th grade wings, we have enough space there to add 16 additional classrooms. The scope of the work at Dubose. Dubose would not, no longer be an intermediate school. It would become the fourth elementary. It will have kids from pre-K to 5th grade, and it would add six classrooms, restrooms, and playgrounds, probably two playgrounds there. And you can see here, Dubose's scope of work, very nicely laid out on that particular piece of land right now, and you can see the six classrooms that would be added. Because we would have pre-K there, those classrooms would be equipped with a restroom in the inside of the classrooms. At Alice High School, the proposal includes a new roof for the 1970 part of the school, which is the majority of the, it's over 160,000, 170,000 square feet of space. The new roof was not covered in the previous repairs, and then we would also look at resurfacing parking lots that are in the most need. But here's a picture of the pink area. A red area is the roof that would be replaced. And this shows the parking lots that we would be evaluating. Some of those parking lots are a little better off than others, but we would definitely look at all of them. The overview, as a district, we would go from nine existing schools to six. Those six schools, five of them built after 2003, all of them self-contained buildings. And with that, there would be closure of Hillcrest, Salazar, and Memorial. There would no longer be an intermediate model, so we would have four pre-K 5 elementaries, one 6th through 8th middle school, and our high school. The cost of the project, of this 20 million, you can see 17, a little over 17 million is to the construction, 82.25%. We're still trying to get that a little bit higher because we haven't finalized the preliminary fees yet, but you can see the estimated cost for Noonan, Sines, and Shaller, it all fall about two and a half million. Adams, with 16 classrooms, it's going to be more, 5 million. Dubose, around 2 million. And the renovations to the high school, over two and a half million. Bond project estimated cost for the fees include about 3.6 million, including a contingency of 5%. That's 1.1 million 39,000, and that is really set aside just in case we have cost overruns, which we hope, of course, not to. Furniture, fixtures, and equipment, most of the furniture will come from the existing schools, but we don't want to put any old furniture into a new building if it's not in good shape, and so we got 311,000 set aside for that. Architect fees, engineer, geotechnical testing, and project management round out the rest of the fees. Our current tax rate is in the region of a 40-school district. It's listed about number 28. We are at $1.33 total, and you can see that 23 cents of that is on the interest and sinking fund side, which is really to pay the debt. The maintenance and operation of $1.10 is really the operating budget. That's where we pay for salaries, materials, and supplies, and so forth. The INS side, the 23 cents generates the money to pay the debt, and we anticipate with that $20,790,000 bond, that we could keep it at 23 cents. If the bond fails, that 23 cents will drop to 16 pennies, and so our total tax rate would be $1.26. Where do we compare as a district? Compared to Robstown and Freear, they're in the $1.72 range, $1.60-some-odd range. We're in the $1.33. But we really felt was important that our tax rate remains static, even with this $20,790,000 bond. The next slide shows what the average impact is on tax- schools, but we don't want to put any old furniture into a new building if it's not in good shape, and so, we got $311,000 set aside for that. Architect fees, engineer, geotechnical testing, and project management round out the rest of the fees. Our current tax rate is in the region of a 40-school district, is listed about number 28. We are at $1.33 total, and you can see that 23 cents of that is on the interest and sinking fund side, which is really to pay the debt. The maintenance and operation of $1.10 is, is really the operating budget, that's where we pay for salaries, materials and supplies, and so forth. The INS side, the 23 cents generates the money to pay the debt, and we anticipate with that $20,790,000 bond, that we could keep it at 23 cents. If the bond fails, that 23 cents will drop to 16 pennies, and so, our total tax rate would be $1.26. Where do we compare as a district, compared to Robstown and Freear, they're in the $1.72 range, $1.60 some odd range, we're in the $1.33. But, we really felt was important that our tax rate remains static, even with this $20,790,000 bond. The next slide shows what the average impact is on taxes on the school district tax. You know, our taxes is built in, we have city taxes, county taxes, but a large part of that, of taxes, is this school district tax. And we have on a, on the average value home, the appraisal value of $81,345, with the $25,000 homestead exemption from the district, and the other exemption, I think, comes from the railroad, we have an average home of $56,046, which with the tax rate of $1.33, comes out to, for the homeowner, $745.41. If the bond passes, the tax rate for that same valued home would stay the same. Of course, the Jim County Appraisal District sets the appraisals for homes. We don't set that as a school district, so if everything remains the same, the tax amount of payment would remain the same. But, that could fluctuate with appraisal values fluctuating. The tax rate will stay the same. If the, if the bond fails, the tax rate for the school district would drop to $1.26, and so, that homeowner, instead of paying $745, would pay $706.18, which comes out to about $39 a year. Now, if you have a home that's valued three times higher, your taxes would be relative to your home value, but the tax rate stays at $1.33. And so, the impact for the tax rate is, there's no change. And the, the next slides is just really the bond information sessions that we've gone out to the community. We've met with staff, we've met with parents, and, and the community members of each of those schools, some of those schools twice, because those are the ones that would be closing. And when would this happen? 2021. So, if the bond passes May 4th, we would, over the next two years, be doing the scope of the work that you see that was presented. August of 2021 is when we would be moving into those new classrooms, and the realignment of the school district would take place. So, we've got a lot of work to do between now and August of 2021. So, that's the conclusion of my presentation at this time. Counsel with Mayor, if you have any questions for me. I think I flew through that pretty quick.
No, great job. Thank you so much. Thank you, we appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Agenda item number five, discuss, consider and act upon approval of City Council minutes for the March 19, 2019, City Council minutes. Counsel, any corrections identified?
I didn't find anything.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mayor, I make a motion to accept minute as presented.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion stands as stated. Agenda item number six, discuss, consider and act upon granting a non-exclusive utility easement with right of ingress and egress for the construction of a cell tower.
I'm here having to ask that you guys table this agenda item. The AT&amp;T vendor hasn't gotten us the survey and specs yet.
Okay. Counsel, there's no objections to table?
Good.
We're good to table. Agenda item number six, tabled. Thank you, Mr. Sparza. Agenda item number seven, discuss, consider and act upon a resolution authorizing the submittal of an application for financial assistance from the Texas Water Development Board through the Clean Water State Revolving Fund for the wastewater collection infrastructure improvements, authorizing the application for financial assistance in an amount not to exceed 7.5 million, designating the city manager as the authorized representative of the city to submit the application for financial assistance, and to execute such documents as may be required in connection with the preparation and filing of the application for financial assistance, and the TWDB rules authorizing other individuals and firms to assist in the preparation and submission of such application, and authorizing them to appear on behalf of and represent the City of Alice before any hearing held by the TWDB in its review and consideration of the application.
That's a long introduction, right? Barbara, our grants administrator is going to present this one.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Tonight, we're asking you to pass a resolution that we need as long, as well as the authorization for the city manager to execute other documents, so we can complete the loan application and submit that. This is the loan application for our wastewater collection infrastructure improvements and water meters project that we discussed at the previous meeting. We've been working with bond counsel, financial advisor, and L&amp;V engineering in preparing this application. We've also submitted a request for authorization to use force account for a portion of the wastewater collection part, about 10,000 to 20, 10,000 to 12,000 linear feet. That request is currently being reviewed by Team Six of the Texas Water Development Board, and we've already responded to two of their questions regarding that request. We'd be happy to address any questions you might have regarding this packet.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? Ms. Carrasco?
Yes, I wanted to ask, on here it says authorizing other individuals and firms to assist in the preparation, are we talking about, what are we talking about?
Bond counsel, financial advisor, and L&amp;V engineering.
So, that's, okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Burke?
None, right.
Okay, Mr. Chris?
No, good, thank you.
Mr. Molina?
No questions.
All right. If there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion at this time, Counsel.
Mayor, I'd like to move for the approval and action of a resolution authorizing submittal of an application for financial assistance from the Texas Water Development Board through the Clean Water State Revolving Fund for the wastewater collection infrastructure improvements, authorizing the application for financial assistance in an amount not to exceed 7.5 million, designating the city manager as the authorized representative of the city to submit the application for financial assistance, and to execute such documents as may be required in connection with the preparation and filing of the application for financial assistance, and the TWDB rules authorizing other individuals and firms to assist in the preparation and submission of such application, and authorizing them to appear on behalf of and represent the City of Alice before any hearing held by the TWDB in its review and consideration of the application. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion stands as stated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barbara. Agenda item number eight, review, update, and discuss pending and current grants including Texas Water Development Board loan application.
Mayor and Counsel, we'd like to give you an overview of grant applications, projects, and Texas Water Development Board projects the city teams have prepared, submitted, and are currently administering. State Homeland Security Program, last year's grant award of $77,912.27 for hazmat equipment for the fire department, some of the equipment has been ordered. This year, we applied for $286,915 for a regional response vehicle for the SWAT team, and for $103,579 for equipment to secure our water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plants, service center, and Lake Finley Pump Station. Currently, those two applications are pending OOG or state review. Department of State Health Services, city received an award of $50,000 for vector control equipment, $30,000 for equipment, and $20,000 for supplies. Mr. Getta is currently ordering that equipment. The Texas TA Safe Routes to School Joint Call for Projects, this is the first time we've applied under that program. Preliminary application for $251,229.60 was submitted to construct a three-foot wide sidewalk with required ADA ramps along the north side of 5th Street and on the east side of Reynolds Street between 5th and 3rd Streets. This project will connect William Adams Middle School to the public library and to downtown to King Street. Other areas were considered, but they have drainage issues that have to be resolved before we can put together this type of project for those areas and other schools. Connecting schools, places of employment, downtown, commercial, historic districts, medical facilities, and recreational areas is a Texas TA focus area for this program. Eligible projects have to be located within two miles of a K through 8th grade, public, private, or charter school. The FEMA Pre-Disaster Mitigation Program that funded our multi-hazard mitigation plan for the city and the county, finance, city finance staff is working with TIDAM subcontractor regarding closing out that grant and receiving our reimbursement. DR 4332 Hazard Mitigation Program, we submitted an application for $588,000, the federal share being $441,000 of that amount, to purchase and install generators at City Hall, Central Fire Station, and at Lake Finley Pump Station. That application is still under review by the state. Criminal justice grants, these are the grants that the city manager spoke of earlier. The current one for this funding cycle, the application was submitted for $99,383. Local Border Security Program for 2019 and 2020. 2019, we received a grant of $90,000 for enhanced patrol for the police department. That grant is currently being performed. We also applied for funding for 2020, and we submitted an application for $90,000, and that application is pending state review. The transition to NiBRS, the state's program year 2019, the city received an award of $88,500 to purchase PTS Platinum, NiBRS-compliant software bundle, licenses, et cetera. That project is being implemented currently. Texas Office of Aviation, 2019 ramp grant, total fund of $50,000, $25,000 in state funds, $25,000 in matching funds, shared evenly between the city and the county, and this is for routine maintenance at the airport. We can purchase herbicide, WIM socks, light bulbs, et cetera. We apply for this annually. The ACIP grant, which we discussed a few meetings ago for Airport Layout Plan Update with Narrative, the grant contractor was received and is currently being signed by city and county officials. Texas Water Development Board projects, groundwater project Phase One, our loan application is pending consideration and approval by the Texas Water Development Board. The groundwater project Phase Two, we did submit the PIF in February, and that will be reviewed, and then our project will be listed in the draft intended use plan that is published during the summer, and we'll be able to see its ranking. The wastewater project is what we discussed in the previous agenda item.
Very good. Counsel, any questions? Mr. Molina?
No questions.
Mr. Chris?
Just thank you for standing up.
Mr. Burke?
Yes, thank you, Barbara. Just a question, ballpark figure, if you added all this together, if you, grants applied for and received, what would be our, an estimated ballpark figure that these total?
For a year?
Yeah, that the city has been involved with. If you don't have, that's fine, I mean, I was just curious.
Couple hundred thousand approximately.
Thank you. It's very good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Carrasco?
We, we have good teams.
Yes.
Yes.
Great job, Ms. Barbara. Thank you, we appreciate the hard work.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Agenda item nine, 10, and 11 is our fire chief, Patrick Thomas, so he's on his way over here, so we're going to bump around that, if that's okay? Mr. Lemon?
Good enough.
Okay. Agenda item 12, discuss, consider, and act upon budget allocation and authorizing the expenditure of hotel occupancy tax funds from the hotel occupancy tax reserves for permissible uses for the Our Lady of Guadalupe, for the Our Lady of Guadalupe and Santo Nino de, de, Atocha, annual Jamaica to be held on April 26, 2019 through April 27, 2019.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Counsel. Thank you for having me. Again, I, I submitted this, I just want to read it briefly, kind of sums everything, but we thank you for your time, and of course, each year, Our Lady of Guadalupe and Santo Nino de Atocha mission work on an annual fundraiser to help meet the financial needs of our parish and mission. Because of the community's support over the years, our festival has really grown. Our festival has always been a success because of the Fellowship and Family Fund that is provided, which is first and foremost in our ministry. We have seen so much growth in our ministries over the years, and the proceeds from our festival help us continue these ministries. Because of local contributions and the generosity of the City of Alice, we are able to continue to provide great entertainment and fellowship for our community. Your contribution will be greatly appreciated and help us provide entertainment and publicity for our event.
Thank you, ma'am.
I submitted an expense report just of entertainment, just to give you all a rundown, that doesn't include other expenses or advertising and security and all those other things, but your consideration, your donation has really gone a long way for our organization, unfortunately, because we all know that the way things are today, and it goes a long way to help us, and our funds and contributions have been so low on sponsorships, and we know, we all get hit on the daily for that, you know, so anything is appreciated.
Their paperwork is in order, and they submitted a budget today. The backup has most of the things in the budget, but-
Broken down.
They provided us with a one-page to show whether we're going to expend the funds, and it's, recommended from staff to approve the agenda item.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? Mr. Molina?
No questions.
Mr. Chris?
No.
Mr. Burke?
No.
Ms. Carrasco? Okay, if there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the expenditure of hot funds, hotel occupancy tax funds from the hotel occupancy tax reserves for the permissible uses for the Our Lady of the Guadalupe, or Our Lady of Guadalupe, for the Our Lady of Guadalupe and Santa Nino de-
Atocha.
Atocha, annual Jamaica to be held on April 26 through April 27, 2019. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion stands as stated.
Thank you, and we hope to see you all there.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Patrick, right here. Okay, agenda item 13, 14, and 15, with legal's permission, could we open them all together and open the public hearing one at a time?
You can go ahead and open, on 13 and 14, you can open the public hearings together, and then go ahead and open 15 after you've conducted your public hearings.
Okay. So, would I read 15 right now, too, and then again?
I would just go ahead and read 13 and 14, and then go ahead and read 15.
Perfect, okay. Agenda item 13, conduct a public hearing and discuss, consider, and act upon an ordinance of the City of Alice, Texas, adopting the City of Alice Water Conservation Plan for retail public water supplier and water conservation plan for a wholesale public water supplier. And Agenda 14, conduct a public hearing and discuss, consider, and act upon an ordinance of the City of Alice, Texas, adopting changes to the City of Alice 2019 Retail Drought Contingency Plan, establishing criteria for the initiation and termination of drought response stages, establishing restrictions on certain water uses, establishing penalties for the violation of, and provisions for enforcement of restrictions, establishing- of, and provisions for enforcement of restrictions, establishing procedures for granting variances, and providing severability and an effective date. So we'll listen to Mr. Demetrio first, and then open.
Sure. Yeah.
Ready? All right. Mayor, Council, City Staff, good afternoon. Water conservation and drought contingency plans for both retail and wholesale. The TCUQ requires that we update our plans every five years. For those that are familiar with the, where in your package, you should find your 2019 proposed plan. For those that are familiar with the 2014 plan, there are no changes to the plan based on the following: little to no population difference, little to no change in demand, water demand, and of course, our water source is still the same. Our deadline to adopt the plans and to submit to TCUQ is May the 1st of this year. Once adopted, with it, I'll submit other reports that are being asked by the state, about seven or eight other reports that have to do with five years of information from water, wastewater, utility billing, and from the Jimbo's Freshwater District, which we supply water to. So if, at this time, I'm asking that those plans be adopted.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? Ms. Carrasco? No. No. No one. Mr. Burke?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Crisp?
I understand that you used, that you said there was no population changes, but the fact that our population has decreased since 2014 doesn't necessarily affect this because we went from a higher population to a lower population, as opposed to the opposite?
Correct. Plus, the demand has not changed as much. Your population fluctuates, our demand has been the same.
Yeah. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Molina?
No questions.
No questions? Okay. If there are no questions, we'll open the public hearing, starting at 7:21 PM. This agenda item is now open for discussion to the public. Agenda item 13 and 14, anyone wishing to speak on these agenda items can come up to the podium and speak at this time. Anyone wishing to speak on Agenda item 13 and 14 are more than welcome to come up and speak at this time. And the time is now 7:22, and we will close the public hearing. And any other questions from Counsel? No questions? Agenda item 15...
We gotta, we gotta make...
Act upon...
Number 13.
You don't want me to open them all together? At the 15?
They're separate ordinances.
Yeah, they're separate ordinances.
Yeah, well, they're all separate ordinances. I mean, it can go either way. She can open 15, and they can adopt all the ordinances at once. Correct?
You can.
Yeah.
To open 15? Okay. Agenda item 15, Discuss/Consider/Act Upon an Ordinance of the City of Alice, Texas, adopting changes to the City of Alice 2019 Wholesale Drought Contingency Plan, establishing criteria for the initiation and termination of drought response stages, establishing restrictions on certain water uses, establishing penalties for the violation of and provisions for enforcement of restrictions, establishing procedures for granting variances, and providing severability, and an effective date. So I'll entertain a motion if there are no questions on Agenda item 15. Counsel, any questions?
I'll prove, move for adoption of the ordinance of the City of Alice, Texas, adopting changes to the City of Alice 2019 Wholesale Drought Contingency Plan, establishing criteria for the initiation and termination of drought response stages, establishing restrictions on certain water uses, establishing penalties for the violation of provisions of enforcement of restrictions, establishing procedures for granting variances, and providing severability and an effective date.
Second. We're gonna have to go, before we move, we're gonna have to go back and...
But hang on, yeah.
And accept the other one.
You went to 14.
No, 15. We have 15.
Yeah, but we were gonna go up to 13.
Yeah, I mean, and you can prove...
And we can do them individually, it's not a big deal.
You can do the approved ordinances as presented.
Right, but it would be ordered to go back to 13 and state 13. Right, Mr. Lemon?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So can we...
If you have a motion for, you wanted to add that motion, approve the other two ordinances as presented, that would suffice on that.
I, well, I second it, but I'd like to amend the motion or propose an amendment to the motion to accept the ordinances presented in items 13 and 14 as presented.
Good.
I made the motion to include...
Yes.
...items because Ron, pardon, Councilmember Burke made the motion reverse to 15.
15.
Yes.
There was a second to that motion?
Yeah, there's a second to it.
Okay.
Second with the amendment, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Okay.
I'm here, I have to read...
All three of them.
Yes, sir.
...read, and see if I can get ProDoper to, I don't know if it pulled it up. Here it is. On April 16, 2019, the City of Alice Public Public Hearing adopted the ordinance, adopting a retail drought mitigation plan to promote responsible use of water, establishing criteria for the initiation and termination of drought response stages, establishing restrictions on certain water uses, establishing penalties for the violation of and provisions for enforcement of restrictions, establishing procedures for granting variances and providing severability and an effective date, directing the city clerk to publish notice of passage of the ordinance, providing for a penalty of fine not to exceed the sum of $500 for offenses as per Section 1 that through 14 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Alice. This is the ordinance, it's on page 127.
114.
That's the one that I just read.
Okay. And then there's also 95.
The one that's not probably...
Yeah.
I apologize, it's just on the, it's not pulling up one of the ordinances. Again, on April 16, 2019, the City of Alice conducted a public hearing, adopted the ordinance, adopting a City of Alice Water Conservation Plan for Retail Public Water Supplier and Water Concrete Conservation Plan for Wholesale Public Water Supplier to promote responsible use of water, establishing utility profile, water use data, service area, water supply system data, wastewater system data, additional requirements for large suppliers, additional conservation strategies, criteria, establishing restrictions on certain water uses, providing severability, and an effective date. And then lastly, on April 16, 2019, the City of Alice adopted an ordinance, adopting a wholesale drought mitigation plan to promote responsible use of water, establishing criteria for the initiation and termination of drought response stages, establishing restrictions on certain water uses, establishing penalties for the violation of and provisions for enforcement of restrictions, establishing procedures for granting variances and providing severability and an effective date, directing the city clerk to publish notice of passage of the ordinance, providing for a penalty of fine not to exceed the sum of $500 for offenses as per Section 1 through 14 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Alice, Texas.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 16. Right. Mr. Patrick, yeah. Discuss/Consider/Act Upon Considering a Resolution Suspending for 45 Days the Effective Date Proposed by CenterPoint Energy Resources Corporation, South Texas Division, in its application filed on or about March 28, 2019 pursuant to Section 104.301 of the Gas Utility Regulatory Act.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just talked about the, Mayor and Counsel, that this is what they call part of, what's occurred is that CenterPoint has the ability to administratively increase rates to certain levels without any involvement, and they call that it's a grip or it's gas reliability infrastructure program. And what they do is they come up with the rates, and they submit them to the Railroad Commission, and the Railroad Commission makes that decision without really any interference from us, unless we request them to suspend it so that they can go ahead and they can review everything that's been submitted to the Railroad Commission. Again, we don't have a specific say in what the Railroad Commission does, but by doing this, it forces the Railroad Commission to review the actual data that they have that's supporting this increase. And we actually had CenterPoint representative come by at City Hall today and explain to the city manager and I how this worked. It really isn't gonna have as great of effect in our community as it is in communities of the country, because it really only affects those households that are using a minimum rate. And the minimum rate is, you have services, you really don't use it throughout the entire year, and so monthly, we charge you a certain amount, whether you're using gas or not, because the pleasure of having our gas services up to your house. And really, all this does is just passes a referendum, allows our consortium to go ahead and ask the Railroad Commission to suspend approval so they can review everything.
To give you an idea, the minimum bill, it's, the effect is gonna, is really for some of the northern areas in their, in Texas. For us, they're, they have about 3,000 customers in the city limits, and about 50 are about minimum bills. So those 50 out of the 3,000, if it were to pass, would be a $2 increase per month. The other, the other customers aren't at the minimum bill, so it wouldn't have any effect on them. But we still wanted to give the, to give the Regulatory Commission some time to look at it and review it and those kind of things. But, yeah, we had a good visit with CenterPoint, and they understand our take, that we just don't want to let them pass something on, even if it's gonna affect 50 of our, of our citizens, of our customers.
Very good.
Counsel, any questions? Mr. Molina?
No questions.
Mr. Crisp?
No.
Mr. Burke?
No.
Ms. Carrasco?
The only thing is on page 137, where it says, whereas on or about, it says March 38, so just...
Okay.
That's impressive.
If there are no other questions?
I'd like to move for a resolution suspending for 45 days the effective date proposed by CenterPoint Energy Resources Corporation, South Texas Division, in its application filed on or about March 28, 2019 pursuant to Section 104.301 of the Gas Utility Regulatory Act.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion stands as stated. Agenda item 17, Discuss/Consider/Act Upon Authorizing City Manager to enter into and sign a membership, a membership agreement with Sourcewell.
Mayor Roland Ramos, our Finance Director, is gonna be here for the next three items.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel.
Hi, Mr. Ramos.
This agenda item was actually on there last month, but we just need to take action on it. Sourcewell is a purchasing cooperative, much as, much like HJAC or Byboard, and it goes through the procurement process, and it awards its members the ability to be able to purchase goods and services through their, through the contracts that are awarded to each individual company. And Enterprise is part of that contract, so the purpose to adopt this is to be able to utilize that, the contract services that are awarded through Enterprise. The next agenda item will be on Enterprise, and Mr. Michael Sosa from Enterprise is here if you have any questions, but this is specifically for Sourcewell and the agreement.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? Ms. Carrasco? Mr. Burke?
No.
Mr. Crisp?
Just for clarity, in case people caught this one and not last meeting, this is the exact same item that we had on...
The exact same item.
For, but we had it for information only last time when we needed to take action, so.
Right.
It's just a carryover in that fact.
Yeah.
That's correct. Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Mr. Molina?
No.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion at this time, Counsel.
Mayor, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to accept and approve staff recommendation of utilizing Enterprise fleet management for the lease purchase of fleet maintenance...
17.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Discuss/Consider/Act Upon, I'd like to make a motion authorizing the city manager to enter and to sign a membership agreement with Sourcewell, I'm sorry. Just a second.
I had it myself on that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion stands as stated. Agenda item number 18, Discuss/Consider/Act Upon Staff Recommendation of Utilizing Enterprise Fleet Management for the Lease Purchase of Fleet Maintenance Vehicles and Execute Any Necessary Agreements.
Yes. As I mentioned, back in January, we had a presentation on this, on the, on the vehicles, and so we've been working on it for several months. We received comparative quotes between Enterprise and DNM leasing, and Enterprise actually had a, was a substantial savings over the DNM one. And so basically, we had a budgeted $100,000 for the lease purchase of the vehicles, and we have two options, which is lease the, to purchase the vehicles with the lease option or without the, with the maintenance option or without the maintenance option. If we do the maintenance option, we're about, we're able to do about 16 vehicles, depending on the models that you pick, for a little or less than the $100,000. It's 98, 99,568. If we add, if we don't add the maintenance, then of course, you're able to purchase about 18 vehicles, but it's a little over 100. So what we're proposing is, or recommending, is to proceed with the 16 vehicles, or approximately 16 vehicles, including the maintenance. It's not included on the PD vehicles, your towels, your towels are not included on the maintenance, but the others, the other 14 or however many we choose, will be included. So we're asking, we're recommending to proceed with the purchase of 16 vehicles, including the lease option, I mean, the maintenance option, I'm sorry. And as I mentioned, Mr. Michael Sosa with Enterprise is here if you have any specific questions on the, the company itself.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Ramos? Ms. Carrasco?
What does the maintenance include with the maintenance option? What is, what does it cover?
It's oil, Michael, you can probably answer that from the top of your head, it's oil changes and...
Yes, it covers all preventative and non-preventative maintenance, all scheduled, non-scheduled, and needs to be done to that vehicle, it's all covered.
That is doing for the life of the lease, or what is... Yeah.
As I understand it, it's the life of the lease.
Yes.
Yes.
It's up to 100,000 miles.
100,000.
Right. Yeah, the only thing that's not included are brakes and tires, because those are wear items, so you're just built for whatever wear items you use at that time.
Sir, would you like to come up, just in case you're gonna be pulled in?
Of course.
That way you can introduce yourself, and we know who we're talking to.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm Michael Sosa with Enterprise Fleet Management. Thank you very much for having me today. If there's any additional questions.
Ms. Carrasco, your question answered?
Yes.
Any others? No. Mr. Burke?
Yes, with the lease aspect, how long would we have use of the vehicles before there would be a turnover? What is the criteria for that?
Yes, of course. Right now, the plan is a five-year term on these vehicles, but it's a flexible term. You can terminate it at any time, or you can extend it at that time. It's completely, it's completely open-ended.
So it's not mileage, or five years, whichever first, or it's five years solid?
Right. There's no mileage restrictions on, on this particular option, and as far as the five years, that's just a recommended replacement, but you can terminate it at two years, three years, extend it out to six, seven years.
Okay. Mr. Burke, I'm so sorry. Any other questions?
Yes.
Mr. Crisp?
So at the end of the five years, we do not own these vehicles, right? This is a, this is a static lease plan, where if we want to extend it, we have to continue to pay, where I think that another option was like a, like a lease-to-purchase plan, correct?
Right. So under this lease option, it's an open-ended equity lease, in which the city retains all equity rights for the vehicle. So while you do not technically own the vehicle, we manage the title for you, you own all the equity associated with it. So the reason that we put a five-year plan in place is at the end of that five years, we're able to evaluate your equity position, and then we can then plan for replacements. So if the city owns $5,000 in equity for that particular vehicle, the city can then choose to use that $5,000 toward their next replacement. So it just helps drive down the acquisition price moving forward on these vehicles.
But there is a purchase option at that time, too?
Of course, yeah. There's a, just like with any sort of...
So the next one goes back to Roland and his communication with staff was for the maintenance plan and the additional vehicles, you're looking at about a $50,000 differential when you consider that the two trucks are what you added. I guess those would be work crew vehicles as opposed to, as opposed to the maintenance plan? The $50,000 over the course of five years, is it a $10,000 value that we're gaining, truly gaining with this maintenance plan versus, you know, is it warranty work? I mean, you said oil changes and so forth and so on, but I mean, how in-depth does this get that, you know, we're not out transmissions, we're not out something else that actually eat up the cost and say, hey, you know, we should have just went with the two extra vehicles? I mean...
And Mike and I discussed that. I think his opinion was he was trying to relieve some of the work at the, you know, maintenance.
At the garage. We can outsource some of that and get it out, and a lot of times also in these, as vehicles get nearer, they're a lot harder to troubleshoot.
Right.
And while we have some pretty good equipment, we don't have the equipment that some of these, that the dealerships have. A lot of times dealerships don't even buy that equipment because it's so expensive. They have it in lease as well, but you're talking about, you know, being able to troubleshoot and saving time and money. So we figured that there probably would, should be a benefit of that amount of money on the lease and maintenance side.
Because that equivalent value also turns into, you know, we could have done a, you know, a patrol unit, another patrol unit if we needed it as opposed to maintenance plan, but, you know, I understand the recommendation of maintenance plans, you know, when you deal with 18-wheelers and they will field business too, you always want to get as much of a maintenance plan as possible with the trucks. So I know where you're coming from. I just thought that that'd be a great question to ask if the general public can hear the answer as well.
Thank you, Mr. Crisp. Mr. Molina?
I have no questions.
Okay, I do have a question. So I see now that we're at different vehicles. And when this came up, and I know because I voiced the opinion of the extreme need for police units, because our police units are in bad shape and oftentimes not safe for our officers and knowing that they run 24 hours a day, a lot of these vehicles, I just want to know how and why we went to, because I only see, and correct me if I'm wrong, but do I see correct from 16 vehicles on the maintenance plan? We only have two that'll go to PD? Is that correct?
No, it is not. That's correct.
It is correct.
And we're talking about, I mean, what we're asking for approval is on a dollar amount also because we're, we've talked about adding another patrol unit and subtracting, but saying within that amount of money if we could. And I know that from talking to our police chief, well, I mean, as we get more forfeiture funds, he's committed to utilizing some of those for either a purchase agreement same way, lease agreement for additional patrol units.
Okay. So these nine Colorado extended cabs, where are they going?
Yeah, I mean, those are going all around for public works. Where we're finding is a lot of the older vehicles we have that we're having to maintain and have in, and are the public works vehicles, they haven't had vehicles in a while, and that's why we're looking at actually doing the smaller trucks. Too, a lot of times, we've had the F-250s, F-350s when they're not, maybe not necessarily needed, and I think we're looking at one of those or two to go into metering as well, right?
Meter reading also.
Yeah, meter reading.
The Chevrolet will go to meter reading also? So we have nine. And then the Ford F-350, the five of them will go?
Yeah, those are all public works.
Those are all maintenance and construction.
Yeah, maintenance and construction.
And they're, they are trying to replace all the 6.0, the 6.0 diesel that are giving us a lot of problems. That was, that's kind of more of a Victor question, you know, but I've been speaking to him about it, but I'm not telling him where they need to go because that's more where he sees the need, he has the inventory and so forth, but Mike and I have offered some input.
Yeah, and that's where we're seeing, I mean, some of those, the one-ton vehicles, where, I mean, the repairs would get expensive there. And we're trying to minimize those and get...
So out of 16 vehicles, only two would go to PD and 14 not. But when this all started, it was for PD because of the need that I felt for public safety. When you have an officer going to a scene that they need to be there ASAP, their chassis doesn't need to blow out. And, you know, I mean, we need, it's in the spirit of public safety where, and I understand the other vehicles are needed, but is there any way we can manipulate where we can do a little bit more for PD and kind of like they've waited? Because all our fleet is old, and we know that. We know that all our fleet is old.
If you guys want to put a number on it, and we can work within that, within, you know, we're working within $100,000, you know, that's kind of less on the maintenance also because it doesn't include a maintenance cost, maintenance not included on a, on a police vehicle. But, I mean, we were thinking about moving one already over after tonight's meeting, you know, but if you guys want to put a number on that, you know, you can certainly do that.
And I understand the cost is more, but they're in bad shape. I mean, and we can't ignore that, that public safety should be, should be one of the main concerns because of the nature of their job. And the other guy's not downplaying the importance of every, every vehicle needed, you know, but I'm just, I'm concerned because some of our vehicles across the street are in bad shape.
Yeah, if you want to add a number to the Tahos, and then we would have to, we could just work within that to fill in the other ones, because we've also talked about looking at a different meter reading vehicle outside of the Colorado. So, you know, we got this, this is our base, and we're working on that to tweak it a little bit. So, you know, there will be a change on, I believe, one or two of the Colorados. We were looking at the Trax, the small SUV that has the all-wheel drive for the meter reading, and it's a real, and it was about the same price as a Colorado, maybe just a little bit cheaper as well.
Because if you look at, I mean, at the cost, it's not that, that much more per vehicle. Counsel, do you all have any input on my recommendation?
I'd like to see, I'd like to see one more PD vehicle that had been handled. You know, with the forfeiture, the forfeiture funds, we can, we can, you know, we have to pair, no, I know, but we are getting some, and, and, you know, there is a good value in those from the Byboard, and since we have to do our own maintenance anyway, we're kind of, if, I mean, if it's six in one hand, half dozen in the other, if we can get them from there, we're paying for them out of forfeiture. So I'd like to at least see one more and adjust accordingly. I know that maintenance and operations needs a lot of help out there, too, but, you know, we had talked about before, you know...
How many trucks are in rotation? Because I see nine. I don't see nine.
There are a lot of stuff that doesn't actually run right now. It's a problem.
I know, but I mean, we've been making it work, so, and we do see the police vehicles out there, and I know that there's a, to me, and this is why I brought this up a long time ago, was because of the need at PD when we at one time had to put two officers in one car. That is unacceptable. That is unacceptable because we're paying two people to be in one car because of the need in vehicles. So that's where my concern is coming. We have to, we have to look at the numbers. You have 14 and then two, or 13 and three. And I understand forfeiture funds may come, but they may not, and there's other needs in the department as well.
Yeah, and also, that's what I was going to say, the forfeiture funds pay for a lot of other things as well when they come in, but they are, the expenditure for forfeiture funds is solely on, on the police chief, and police chief will decide how those are good spent. And so if he were to see something that is needed, you know, there may not be always money for vehicles.
Exactly.
How many vehicles are currently being utilized right now by the APD?
PD Chief, can you, can you answer that question? How many vehicles are in, are in rotation, being used, actively used?
How many vehicles are actively used?
On patrol, though, right?
On patrol, right, right, patrol. Because that's our concern, that's my concern.
We have like 12.
That's, yeah. And we go all the way back to the Crown Vic, guys. Don't ignore that Crown Vic driving around. I'm sorry. How many miles? 160,000?
Twenty-five.
And one of the Tahos?
What year are those Crown Victorials?
The Crown Vics are probably like, I think like the 2006?
Six?
No way.
Seven.
Robert, we were young when they were driving around. You had hair when they were driving around.
No, I didn't. No, I didn't.
The Crown Vics, they're pretty...
Right.
Yeah. And some, I mean, that's just going back to the oldest, the obvious, that embarrasses me when I see it still driving around, but...
Out of the 12, though, I mean, some of those are a little bit newer.
What's the newest one, I guess, we should ask?
The newest ones are like the Tahos, the Tahos and the Explorer. We have an Explorer, it's a 20, it's a 2017.
The Explorer, that's your newest one. And your Tahos are?
Their Tahos are like a 2016, 2015.
And average miles on them right now?
Those probably have like 60, maybe 50, 60.
Yeah, out of the 12, I think that, was it whom we talked to last time, were we talking six, seven that were probably needed to, yeah, wasn't all of them needed to be replaced, but about half, maybe?
And right now, we're looking at the city manager, now we're looking at which ones would need to be taken off the street.
Right.
To replace, and I'm looking at, we're looking at the avenues.
And I'm sure there's more than three.
Yeah, and I think we were looking at the three, that will get us halfway to where we, where we need it to be of half of the half.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
When we were talking about the three, I think what the conversation was more of, if we needed about half of those vehicles replaced, this would get half of, half of that half done, and we still need another three to really be complete, because, yeah, some of those vehicles are good. So that, you know, six is what we would need, get three of them out of this. But ultimately, you...
I would like to see it increased also to at least two, two more for the police department. And I have a question, and I don't know if, but does it have to, I don't know what's available, but for patrol purposes, does it have to be a Tahoe? Isn't there something a little more?
Chief.
Chief, what do you think?
Charger.
What's the question again? Do you need Tahos for patrol?
Because there's other cars, or what other vehicles are out there?
Because I see other departments having different vehicles, and what were you thinking?
Well, I spoke to Roland and the city manager about this, but, you know, getting sedans, maybe going, if I can get another vehicle instead of getting two Tahos, if I can get another vehicle, a third vehicle, I will go that route. But Roland and I got together, city manager, and I think it was like a $34 difference.
The Tahoe Chevy has been very aggressive in their pricing, so they're, they're actually, you can probably get the Tahoe as opposed to maybe an Explorer, and the Explorer is just only $30, $40 less.
And a car, though?
What about like a Challenger? You see a lot of patrol units Challenger.
Because then we look at gas thing there, too. That's what I look at.
We're looking at, we're looking at the Chargers, and we're looking at the Focus because of, you know, you know, but actually Focus are pretty, you know, pretty nice.
They are, they're, they're nice, I know, I know.
Yeah, they're probably as big as a Charger.
But like that would be an option, too, because of gas mileage and things like that versus a Tahoe. And the use of the Tahoe, we need it, you know, K9, yes, but versus a car, would it be a huge inconvenience to our officers to go from a Tahoe to a car?
No.
No, right? So I wonder if that's something that we could look at, because I, I'm with you, Mr. Burke, I would like to at least see that number at four. Because if you think on the mayor's wish list, I wanted 25 new PD cars, and now we're going to 14 and only two, I'm like, wait, whoa, whoa, whoa. If I hadn't said anything, this wouldn't be here. So let's go back to the original idea of trying to get that PD taken care of, and yes, the other departments do need that, too. Ms. Carrasco, you have a question? No?
I said that's, it was a concern of all counsel.
Okay. But, yeah, so do you have a question, ma'am, other than a comment? Okay.
Just a comment, that was it.
Okay, you're welcome. So that was my initial concern because of PD and the safety of our public and things like that. So yes, the other, the other is important as well, but I'd like to entertain maybe at least being able to do something a little different to get us a little bit more, a car or a vehicle that's, that's...
Well, we can probably, you can probably get more bang for your buck, right, going to a sedan or something versus a monster Tahoe, you know, right? Because I'm looking at, okay, it's almost $600 per vehicle, and like, and, you know, I'm sure the 4x4 kicks in a lot, too, and then plus gas mileage and all that, so...
Right.
I just want to also make sure that Chetos in line with us, that chief, that you're in line with us, that, that, you know, by exploring this option, we're not hindering our officers from doing their job and securing their safety as well. You know, is the, is the selection of the vehicle going to make it harder for them to do the job? Is it going to make them, going to remove safety from them to be able to do their job? We don't want to necessarily do that as well, but I think that the mayor and Ron and the council as a whole just says, hey, let's see if we can get more bang for our buck, you know? If we can, you know, reduce a Colorado and slide in, you know, you know, something that would be, you know, a sedan, right? And you're adding the Colorado 25, you know, and a $20,000 to $30,000 sedan that gets us there, if we have to look at an option that maybe goes, I think that we'd all be okay with, hey, if the option goes a little bit more than $100,000, present it to us, but make sure that our security, make sure that the performance is there. I think that they bring up great points in saying a couple more patrol vehicles is a good thing. We need six. If we can get to four, even if we have to change what we're getting. I know that if I'm not mistaken, the 2017 vehicle that we just recently purchased, I say recently, but it's been two years ago, that was a joint purchase, if I'm not mistaken, between us and the county on forfeiture funds, that they assisted us in the purchase of that vehicle. What I want to do is I want to be able to say, hey, we're exploring this, we're adding the options that they brought forward, a sedans as opposed to just Tahos. We love it, we love the idea of having a whole bunch of big police PD vehicles out there, but if we have to pull back a little bit for it, let's do that. You know what I mean? Let's see what we can do without hindering their performance and safety.
So that's where I'm not comfortable, where, I mean, initially, when I looked at this, and I'm glad I brought it up, because there's nine and two, and that's not, that's, that was my concern.
But remember also on the size of vehicle, the, our police officers are wearing, they have a belt with weapons and lights and cuffs and...
Well, I don't want to go too small, but you see a lot of, I keep saying Challengers, but it's Chargers, right? You see a lot of cities using things like Chargers now, the four-door Chargers, they're using things like that, because it's a, that is a big vehicle. That is not a compact car, and you see some big old patrolmen getting in and out of those cars in Corpus Christi, if I'm not mistaken, they have several of those on patrol as well.
What I'm hearing, it seems like if you guys want to move forward and just stipulate three or four, I think you all said four patrol vehicles, we can include that and work on whether there's an option on Tahos or not, or a sedan, but then we'll work the other numbers on the service vehicles that we need for public works or meter reading and that sort, but, and that can vary. We just need to, you know, approval from you guys to move forward, and you guys can say, move forward with this number of vehicles and everything else.
Stipulation.
Yeah, on that one specifically. We'll be glad to work within those guidelines, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with that, just so long as we're not at two vehicles, you know.
And I don't, financially, I don't even think the $100,000 is going to be as big of an issue. I'll tell you why, because we're already six months into the year.
Right.
And so the lead time on these vehicles is what, about three months?
Three to four months, depending on the make and model.
So we'll be working on the budget for next year already, and if we have to increase it a little bit to purchase, you know, one or two extra, then it's not that big of a issue.
When this item...
I'm sorry, Mr. Molina, go ahead.
That's okay. I interrupted. When this item was first introduced, I kind of just glanced at the vehicles and I just kind of, you know, it was my, you know, it was very rough, but I was, I was on the assumption When, when this item was first introduced, I, I, you know, I kind of just glanced at, at the vehicles and, and I just kind of, you know, I, it was my, uh, you know, it was very rough, but, you know, I was, I was on the assumption that it'd be probably be like fifty-fifty, cause I, I, I talked to a lot of, uh, a lot of, a lot of, uh, you know, a lot of our officers that are out there on the beat and, and, uh.
It's a common, it's a common concern.
It's actually a morale issue right now, to be honest with you, you know, and has nothing to do with, with, you know, anything else other than they get in a vehicle and they don't feel like, okay, am I gonna be able to chase this guy or whatever?
Right.
And, uh.
Or going to the scene, I've, I've had several conversations where they don't make it because of car.
Versus, you know, waiting for money to fall out of the sky from a forfeiture or something, I think we'll be a little more proactive.
That's not set.
Even if it's just a little, a couple of baby steps toward, uh, you know, being a little more proactive.
Absolutely.
I'm in agreement with that, you know?
Thank you, Mr. Molina. Um, but, but, yeah, like if, like if you say that Tahoe is not that much more, then it would be good to entertain that. Simply because of our terrain too, and our, you know, our streets that maybe they're gonna need to go into, so if it's, a car might have more wear and tear because it's lower and lower to the ground, so that might be your consideration, and, and I'm sure, I'm sure, uh, chief can assist with that and, cause that's just coming from somebody who drives. And my, my car is higher, whereas if I were in a lower car, it probably couldn't get through flooded streets or some of those hard bumpy roads. So if it's not that much more than a Tahoe is obviously what they, what they feel comfortable driving.
Whatever makes sense, yeah.
Yeah. But if we're gonna have a Tahoe or two more cars, then I think council would agree that we'd rather have two more cars.
One Tahoe versus two patrol units, or patrol cars, sedans. I think it's.
So council, I guess what city manager wants as a directive is how many cars we want to, um.
Include for the patrol.
Include for patrol, for APD.
We can work within that, uh.
So.
Cause if you think about it, we have sixteen.
Just, just to clarify right now, um, the idea that you could, you, you can manipulate the, the, the lease, the, the number of vehicles, we may hit a number that exceeds the hundred thousand, but that will not be a portion of this year's budget because it's only gonna be a three-month lease anyway. However, let's not go overboard with the idea that next year's budget, uh, you know what I mean, is, is, oh, they've given us permission to go, you know what I mean? Just, you know, do what you've been doing, y'all been doing a great job between y'all in, in evaluating that. But know that council, you know, supports the idea of.
But that's what.
Four patrol units and, and moving forward, and if we have to manipulate.
Number though.
Yeah, manipulate, no, no.
Cause what'll end up happening is.
We will, but I'm just saying.
Yeah, if, if y'all do the, the four patrol units, we would probably end up looking at maybe a minus on a, on a three fifty, a one-ten, and keep the one that, that, that's the best one out there, and then, uh, we still are gonna change around, uh, one or two Colorados to maybe the smaller, um, smaller SUVs for meter reading. So, you know, we have some, some, you know, we can work some of those numbers there.
Okay.
Um, you know, we just know that, that you guys, you know, are set on the four patrol, and that's what we keep there and we'll work.
I would say more, but if council agrees to four, I'll take four versus two.
I think.
I'd say six.
Thank you, Mr. Molina. Do you say six, Mr. Burke?
Yeah.
Do I hear six? Do I hear six, Mr. Burke?
I'd love to see six, I just, I just, with the budget that we're working on.
Have sixteen vehicles.
Well, yeah.
Ten.
But you're also talking about a vehicle that's, that's double the cost of, of the larger majority of the, yeah, it's two for every one in the, in the.
Colorado.
In the Colorado. That's the, that's the only difference is, I'd love to see more, but you have to spread it out and get it, I know we need six total. If we get four, we're two-thirds of the way there.
The three fifty is more, sir, of the, if you look at the three fifties, there's five of them, and that cost is more than a Tahoe.
And, um, on the three fifty is the one, when we have the, the, the six point O, which is a horrible engine they add. Some of the, uh, but we can look at minus, and we have any, um, we can look at minus in one of those if we can.
Right, and those you have the service body, that's why they're pricier, you have the service body.
But those are almost two hundred more than a patrol car.
And, and do the, do the police, uh, Tahos have to be four by four?
No.
No, they don't? I mean, that could cut back a little bit, I mean.
For sure.
And you said probably going like to a single cab for the service ones or something?
On a couple of them, yeah, we, we can, there's some work to be done on this.
We could shoot for six, if we get five, we'd be happy, if not, then it's four. But at least, you know, kind of aim high if we can kind of fit in the box.
I agree with Mr. Molina.
We should say, uh, with at least four. And then we give staff the ability to do their job and get to where we need to be.
Of two, six?
Yeah.
No less than four, hopefully five.
And if they can squeeze out eight, let them try to squeeze that out. But I say with a minimum of four, and then let staff.
Even if their focus is.
Hey, that's, and don't be counting the bikes, guys. Don't be counting the bikes, those guys are already working hard enough already.
Poor Michael, sorry, Michael.
Mr. Esparza, does that, is that good enough?
Yeah, that'll work, sure.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you, council, for listening.
We still need to.
An emotion form?
Yeah, I need to, um, entertain a motion at this time to make it formal.
Mayor, I make a motion to, um, for the utilization of enterprise management for the lease purchase of fleet maintenance vehicles and execute a necessary agreement with the stipulation that staff work towards a minimum of four patrol units.
Okay.
No, minimum, let them go as high as they can get with the, with the budgeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion stands as stated, thank you, council.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys, thank you all so much. Agenda item nineteen, here status report on March twenty nineteen, month-end financial statements and summary of funds.
Umbrellas.
They're pretty.
These are the financial statements for March thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. We're six months into the year, to the fiscal year already, so we should be at fifty percent of these, we'll start with the general fund. We're six million, five hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three, year-to-date. We'll start with property tax, property tax, um, we budgeted one million, four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight, and year-to-date is two million, five hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-three, which is almost ninety percent of our collections already. Do we have the sales tax?
Uh, the sales tax was, um, passed out, it's right here, sir. That one we got.
I don't, I don't know if there's a graph for it, but through March thirty-first, we've collected three million, seven hundred and one, or almost three hundred and seventy, three hundred and seven, seven and two dollars, three million, seven hundred and two dollars, two thousand. Um, and through March two thousand nineteen, we're three point seven, and then, uh, March two thousand eighteen was two mil, three million, seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one forty-three. So we're about thirty-six thousand less than where we were last year at this time. On the chart that you have in front of you, uh, on the far left, you have the tax levy, um, where it shows for two thousand nineteen, eighteen, and seventeen. Uh, we don't have a graph in, for it, but I think you'll have it in front of you. And then to the far right, and, and the blue is March, where we've collected for the month of March. So for two thousand nineteen, we're about eighty-six point six percent, and last year at this time, we're about eighty-seven point four percent. Sales tax. We budgeted three million, one hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred and twenty, that's through March. But our collections is two million, fifteen thousand, seven hundred and one, and that's through January. So that's about thirty-two percent. Two thousand nineteen sales tax budget versus actual, this is through February. Is two million, six hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred was the budget, the actual was two million, five eighteen, six oh nine. So it's about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-one less from, from the budget amount. Now that includes the four capital items that, that we're funding and the budget. Actual collections, two thousand nineteen versus two thousand eighteen, and this is through February. Two million, five hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and nine was what we collected in nineteen, eighteen was two million, five hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and sixty-four, which is about twelve thousand, fifty-five dollars less for actual collections. Occupation on mixed beverage and franchise license and permits are both due and at the end of April. So we're, right now, we're about thirty-one and thirty-six percent on those. And our governmental is, is about thirty-five percent. Our charges for services is ninety-eight percent. Um, miscellaneous fines and forfeitures is ninety-four percent. Miscellaneous is a hundred and fifty-five percent. And our inner fund is, uh, almost fifty-seven percent. Have you noticed that one's a little bit over, uh, on the actual collections, and that's because we had a construction account that we closed and we put into the general fund. That's based on what the auditors had told us, they wanted to close, for us to close more accounts.
Real quick, how much was that, that, that dollar value that was moved to?
About a hundred and thirty-three thousand.
A hundred and thirty-three, okay.
Uh, general fund expenditures were five million, nine hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and twenty-six, which is about forty-seven percent. We should be at fifty, so in this case, it's a good thing. All your major funds, general service, finance administration, fire department, police department, street, street maintenance, parks and rec are all under budget total, they're all under the total budget. All major funds, we have a general fund, uh, revenue over expenditures is in the positive, five hundred and eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven. A solid waste is almost seventy-two thousand in the positive. Utility fund is almost two hundred and twenty-two thousand in the positive. Airport is three thousand, one hundred and eighty-three, that does include the, the inner fund transfers. Golf course is four thousand, one forty-eight of savings and the maintenance and construction, but a large part of it is water purchases. Our airport is, uh, about, what's that, about four thousand, uh, less than, than two thousand nineteen over eighteen. Our golf, golf course fund was in the negative twenty-four thousand last year, and this year it's four thousand, it's a little bit better. Hotel occupancy fund was in the negative, almost thirty-one thousand this year, it's thirty-seven thousand, four seventy-one. And the multi-use complex in two thousand eighteen was in the negative fifty-three thousand, seven twenty, and this year it's a hundred and five thousand, fifty-five dollars. Of course, we're barely getting to the months of, the multi-use complex where, where we're gonna start seeing more revenue. Are any question on the financials?
Council, any questions? Mr. Crisp?
Yeah, on this last slide that you still have up right here, where it has your solid waste operations and your utility fund revenues over expenditures, do those, um, expenditures also include the transfers that we do into the general fund? Do they include that transfer as an expenditure?
Yes.
They do, okay, because I know that's, that's a substantial amount, and, and we've been, actually been doing those same transfers for both of these years, correct?
Right, that's correct.
The same amount?
The.
Roughly?
Roughly.
Roughly, cause we actually reduced it a little bit in this last, this last budget.
The, the golf course fund and the multi-use did not have those transfers last year.
Right. Well, I'm really just focusing on the, the, the true revenue-producing assets that we have, which you being the utility fund, being the, uh, the solid waste operations fund that we have there, and the fact that revenues would be a lot higher on those.
Right.
Uh, but we, we have to utilize those funds in the general fund, so I was just curious to make sure that the transfers that go into the general fund are included in the expense coming out of those individual funds.
That's correct, and they, they also include transfers to debt service.
Okay, yeah.
Transfers to general fund and debt service.
Okay.
Any other questions, Mr. Crisp?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
Mr. Molina?
No questions.
Mr. Burke?
No.
Ms. Carrasco?
I do have a question on, um, on the sales tax. When we budgeted, we were, we said four hundred and eighty, and then forty thousand.
That's correct.
And five hundred and twenty thousand in sales taxes, what we were kind of anticipating and budgeting. But I wanted to know, like, on here, it's showing five twenty-nine, so I was wondering where did, where, where did that change, or how, how did we change that?
Five twenty-nine is the, uh, is what we were, um, if the excess came in, that would go to, uh, the street fund and the, uh.
Okay, but I thought it was four eighty, and then forty thousand was the excess bringing it to five twenty.
It's five twenty-nine, two hundred. If you, if, if the forty, four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two twenty, and if you add the forty thousand per month, then it comes out to the five twenty-nine.
We didn't go by four eighty, then, we went four eighty.
Forty-nine, two twenty, and if you include forty thousand per month, then it comes out to the five twenty-nine, two hundred.
Okay, and we've only collected up to January, you said?
Through Feb, yes, well.
We still.
January, but the, the chart that shows the February is because we've collected it, but it's not reflected in the financials. And right now, we're averaging about five hundred and four thousand. So we're a little bit over, but we're not enough to contribute the forty thousand per month.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
Great job, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Agenda item number twenty, here presentation from Alice Police Department regarding statistics for first quarter calls for service, arrests, citation information within the city of Alice.
Chief?
Good evening, mayor, mayor and council, uh, this evening, I'm already talking about the statistics for the Alice Police.
Real quick, before we get started, is this the same slideshow we have because it's, it's different?
It's better for him to look at it in blue.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we had the same one, because what we're presented is, is a different layout, I just wanted to make sure. Sorry for the interruption, please continue.
I thought I let you, you were in office right now.
Uh, this evening, I'm going to be presenting the Alice Police Department quarterly stats for January first, twenty nineteen, to March thirty-first of twenty nineteen. This is the patrol division. The, uh, patrol division, the cost of service, we had in January, we had one thou, one thousand, one hundred and eighty-five. In February, we had one thousand and seventy-nine. In March, we had one thousand, one hundred and thirty-one, for to, for a total of three thousand, three hundred and ninety-five costs for service for the quarter. The adult arrests, in January, we had a hundred and six, February, we had ninety-two, in March, we had eighty-five, for a total of two hundred and eighty-three for the quarter. Juvenile detentions, in January, we had fifteen, February had thirty, in March, we had eleven, for a total of fifty-six for the quarter. Citation and warning tickets, in January, in January, we had a hundred and twelve citations, sixty-seven warnings, for a total of hun, a hundred and seventy-nine. In February, we had a hundred and thirty-one citations, a hundred and forty-four warnings, a total of two hundred and seventy-five. In March, we had a hundred and thirty-five citations, a hundred and three warnings, for a total of two hundred and thirty-eight. So for the quarter, we had six hundred and ninety-two contacts, citations and warnings. The criminal investigation division, for January, they had, uh, two hundred and seven cases assigned. Twenty-eight of those cases were referred to the DA's office, thirty-one were referred to the county attorney's office, twenty-three referred to municipal court, seventeen referred to juvenile probation, eleven were cleared by exceptionally, a hundred and eighteen cases were closed. One agency assists, four active, seven felony arrests, and five misdemeanor arrests for January. For February, we had a hundred and fifty-five cases assigned. Thirty-eight of those cases were referred to the DA's office, sixty-two were referred to county attorney's office, twenty were referred to municipal court, twenty-six were referred to juvenile probation office, eight cases cleared exceptionally, seventy cases closed, ten cases actively being investigated. Eight cases closed by agency assist, one felony arrest, four misdemeanor arrests. For March, they had a hundred and seventy-nine cases assigned, eleven of those cases went to the DA's, to the DA's office, or district attorney's office. Thirty-four cases were referred to county attorney's office, twenty cases were referred to municipal court, twelve cases were referred to juvenile probation, four cases cleared by exceptionally, sixty-nine cases closed, fifty cases actively, actively being investigated. Three cases closed by agency assist, three felony, felony arrests, one misdemeanor arrests. For the, uh, special crimes, interdiction, and special operations unit, we had, in January, they had twenty cases assigned, fifteen cases referred to the DA's office, or district attorney's office, nine cases referred to county attorney's office, three cases referred to juvenile probation, eleven cases closed, four cases pending lab results, two cases closed by agency assist, nine felony arrests, seven misdemeanor arrests, nine citations, twelve warnings. For February, they had forty cases assigned, twenty-two of those cases were referred to the district attorney's office, ten cases referred to county attorney's office, two cases referred to juvenile probation, seventy, seventeen cases closed, four cases pending lab results, no cases are, are agency assist, thirteen felony arrests, ten misdemeanor arrests, six citations, and thirty-nine warnings. For February, they had forty cases assigned, twenty-two cases referred to the, the district attorney's office, ten cases referred to county attorney's office, two cases referred to juvenile probation, seven, seventeen cases closed, four cases pending lab results, zero cases closed, agency assist, thirteen felony arrests, ten misdemeanor arrests, six citations, and thirty-nine warnings. In March, they had thirty cases assigned, fifteen cases referred to the district attorney's office, five cases referred to county attorney's office, two cases referred to juvenile probation office, one case referred to municipal court, thirteen cases closed, six cases pending lab result, zero agency assists. result, zero agency assists, eight felony arrests, nine misdemeanor arrests, fourteen citations, forty-two warnings. For the quarter, the breakdown for special crimes, interdiction, and special operations unit, marijuana was seized as twenty ounces, wax marijuana was eight ounces, cocaine seized sixteen grams, synthetic marijuana seized with five grams, assorted pills with Lortaps, Xanax ecstasy were three ounces total, crystal meth eighteen grams, farms seized were two, vehicles seized were three, currencies seized were thirteen thousand three hundred and five, felony arrests total were thirty, misdemeanor arrests were twenty-six, this for the quarter, January through March.
Great job.
Any questions?
Chief, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Chief, I have a question, a procedural or process question. We use a lot of terminology, and you use the term referred to a district attorney's office or the county attorney's office. What does that mean to refer a case?
It's when they get the case all together, and it's, they close the case out, and it's, there's enough evidence to, for it to go over to the DA's office or county attorney's office.
So when, and how do you file a case? How do you refer it? Do you physically take it there, or is there another method you use?
They have, we have drop boxes, and sometimes we, well, most of the time, we use Dropbox and refer them over to the district attorney's office, and some of them to the county attorney's office, and even then, some we even walk over there, and they sign for them.
And when you do that, does that include all the documentation, all the evidence, or, you know, the complete file of everything?
Yes, sir.
That goes into that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, any questions? Mr. Molina?
I just had just a curious question. What do you all do with the firearms when you seize them?
The firearms, when we see the firearms, there's nothing we can do with them. They're off the streets, and we, our evidence technician, what she does is, she files paperwork through the DA's office, the district attorney's office, and for destruction.
They get destroyed, yeah.
What is marijuana wax?
It's basically, what it is, is a extraction of the base of it, of the marijuana, which there's a method, there's a chemical method that they use, their mixtures to extract the wax of it, the THC.
They use it in the vapes?
In the vape.
Oh, in the vape.
Okay, yeah, all right.
Pretty potent.
Pretty potent.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Crisp?
Yes, I got, I got actually two, two different ones, real quick. In your breakdowns here, when you refer to the, to things like, there was two hundred and seven cases assigned, okay, we know that those actually were assigned during the month, but as you move down there, and you're saying twenty-seven cases, thirty-one cases referred, thirty, you know, twenty-three cases referred, or, you know, a hundred and whatever closed, are you talking statistically about the two hundred and seven for that month, or are some of those numbers actually carryovers? Because we know not everything happens within the same month, right? So is that, is that against those numbers, or is it against, you know, that's actually what you did? The case may have been open for three months, and you closed it in January, and it goes against those January numbers?
Some of those, some of these cases, they carry over from, you know, from month to month, month to month, even by year. So some of the statute limitations, some of, we have two years statute limitation, so we, you know, some of them, we have to work on them, and some of them, we exhausted leads as to we, we don't have, you know, we done everything to, you know, work on this case, particular cases, and that's where we have these high numbers, and then you see that the numbers are referred over to the DA's and county attorneys and municipal court and things like that.
No, I don't think anybody's faulting you for the job that you are doing. The question I was just wondering was, so yes, the, let's say, January here for criminal investigations, when it shows a hundred and eighteen cases closed, a portion of those cases were potentially carryover cases that y'all just happened to close in January?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all. And then the next one was, is there a way, and I know that this, this is dictated by the information that you have to enter into a system that goes to the state, or I'm not sure what level, the federal level where they have to dictate it, but is there any way that maybe you can, you know, with the efforts that the counsel has made and the mayor have, and yourself have made, that we can see a number of calls that actually go to AISD facilities? Just, you know, just something to kind of show that, that the efforts put forth by counsel, yourself, you know, city management, and the independent school district are taking place and moving forward?
Yes, sir. We, there's a, there's a way where there, our computer, our PTS system, which is, that's what we use, and case management, we're able to break it, break it up into how many calls are to the high school, how many calls are to, you know, Dubose, and how many calls are to William Adams, and so on and so on. We can also break it down to see how many calls are broken up to the southwest side of town, or southeast and northeast and northwest, so, and we also can, we can pin it down as to, you know, where our highest crime areas are.
Right, okay.
If you guys would like a supplement to the, our quarterly report, we can, we can do that.
Yeah, that'd be great. I'm just, I'm just curious, I know that, that there's been cracking down, and I think it's a, it's a great thing, and I'd just like to know where we stand on some of that stuff. As far as the rest of it, keep up the great work, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Burke?
One more question.
Yes, sir.
When you refer, when you refer the case, and maybe there isn't an answer you can give me, but typically, how long does it take, once you refer a case, before you hear the status of that case? Like, how long, it's either closed, dropped, or whatever term we want to use. How long is the average median timeframe? Is there an answer you can give me on that?
Yeah, it varies, you know, particularly on the case, if it's a sexual assault case, you know, a murder case, or a, you know, assault bodily injury case, depending, those cases are, some of them take longer, you know, sometimes it'll take three months, two months, some even longer, you know? And this is where our, my CID department and my narcotics department and interdiction officers are now giving me status as to, okay, not only because you turn in the case, it stops there, now we want to know where is the status, whether it's been, you know, DNF, which is did not file, or was it, you know, is it coming up for court, or things like this?
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Carrasco? No questions?
Chet, so unlike case, because I understand the system, how it takes a while just for y'all to gather information, and then it goes to the DA's office, or, you know, the next office, and then it might take some time. Unlike that, I understand that part, but the, what you guys have picked up, so your marijuana seeds, these numbers are excellent, to my knowledge, of what we've picked up. These numbers are current quarterly numbers, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So these are the numbers that have been in place, January, February, March, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so is there any way I can get a report of last year's numbers?
Yes, ma'am.
Of January, February, March?
Yes, ma'am, you can.
So that I can compare? I'm almost positive that they're skyrocket, but I would like to confirm it. So if you can get that to me, that'd be awesome. But great job, because I can totally see that we're actually picking up drugs and seizing and doing. I'm very proud of you and the work that you and your, your department have done. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Counsel, if there are no other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number twenty-one, and we have Fire Chief Patrick Thomas. And Mr. Lemon, do you recommend I go to nine, ten, eleven first?
Whatever you would like.
Okay, since I'm an orderly person, I would like to go to agenda item number nine, which we skipped. Counsel, if you'll remember that we skipped nine, ten, eleven, because they are Mr. Thomas's items. So, agenda item number nine, hold a public hearing to discuss, consider and act upon a request to rezone Atkinson addition Lot Three, Block Three, known as one thousand six Cherry Street, from IC Industrial Commercial District to a R six Mobile Home Family District, Jimwells County, Texas, as shown by map thereof, recorded in volume one, three, one, one, page seven, nine, seven, described map records, Jimwells County, Texas.
I'll let you open the hearing. Can we open all three hearings at the same time, or do we need to do one individually?
Okay, so agenda item number ten, discuss, consider and act upon a final plat being two acre tract of land out of the seventeen point seven five seven acre tract of land out of blocks fifty-two and fifty-three of the town of Alice, recorded in volume one, page sixty-two, map records, Jimwells County, Texas, and also being out of that same tract of land conveyed from Louis Patino to South Duval LLC dated April ninth, twenty thirteen, recorded in volume eleven eighty-seven, pages eight, eight, nine, dash, eight, nine, two, of the official public records of Jimwells County, Texas. And agenda item ten, discuss, consider and act upon a final plat being a replat of lots, Lot one, R, one, R, of the Lobo Plaza, recorded in volume thirteen, page nine, map records, Jimwells County, Texas, and Lot four, Block one hundred and thirty-seven F of the Alice Farm Blocks, recorded in volume one, page sixty-three, map records, Jimwells County, Texas. So we will open...
Yeah, the public hearing's only for item number...
For nine.
Nine.
Correct. So we can open that, and then close it, and then move on to, okay? The time is now eight-thirty. I open agenda item number nine to a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on agenda item number nine, please come up and speak at this time. Agenda item number nine, Atkinson addition Lot Three, Block Three, Cherry Street. Okay, the time is now eight-thirty-one. Since nobody came up to speak, we will close the public hearing at eight-thirty-one. So, Chief?
Item number nine is going to be one thousand and six Cherry, one thousand and six Cherry Street, and it's going from an IC, which is a commercial district, industrial commercial district, to an R six. The owners are proposing to put a mobile home on that property, and R six is the appropriate zoning for that property. This has been to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and it has passed planning and zoning, and is waiting your approval.
I'll entertain a motion on agenda item number nine.
Mayor, I make a motion to rezone Atkins addition Lot Three, Block Three, known as one oh six Cherry Street, from an IC Industrial Commercial District to an R six Mobile Home Family District, Jimwells County, Texas, as shown by map, therefore recorded in volume one, three, one, one, page seven, nine, seven, transcribed map records, Jimwells County, Texas.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Okay, motion stands as stated.
Item number ten, this is a property on North Texas Boulevard that has been, it's actually a final plat, it's not a rezone. The plat for this is, the owner, the developer of the property is separating the property into two different tracts, and one tract is going to be a, some sort of an athletic center, and it would be directly adjacent to the USDA building that's on North Texas.
Counsel, are there any questions? There are no questions, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mayor, I make a motion to accept a final plat being two acre tract of land out of the seventeen point seven six acre tract of land out of the blocks fifty-two and fifty-three of the town of Alice, recorded in volume one, map sixty-two, map records, Jimwells County, Texas.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Okay, motion stands as stated. And agenda item eleven.
Agenda item eleven is a, this is the property adjacent to the Lobo Plaza, which is where Little Boat Net is at. It's currently vacant, and they're proposing to turn it into an extension of their parking lot for the businesses, I believe, just to help with the development of that shopping center.
Counsel, any questions?
This is on the same block, not the one across the street, right?
Correct, it's the one on the same block, not, not across...
To the east.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions, Counsel? Okay, there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mayor, I make a motion to accept final plat being a replat of lots, Lot one, R, one, R, for the Lobo Plaza, recorded in volume thirteen, map nine, map records, Jimwells County, Texas, and Lot four, Block one hundred and thirty-seven F, one thirty-seven F, for the Alice Farm Blocks, recorded in volume one, page sixty-three, map records, Jimwells County, Texas.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion stands as stated. Thank you. Agenda item number twenty-one, here a presentation from the Alice Fire Department regarding statistics for quarterly calls for service.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Before you, you have a series of reports. These are the twenty nineteen first quarter reports of statistics from the Alice Fire Department. The very first report is a general snapshot of the department's call volume, and I went ahead and included two different reports, one from twenty eighteen, one from twenty nineteen, for comparison, and one thing that I would like to highlight is that there are twenty-five less calls than last year at this time. The next report, oh, the other thing I wanted to highlight is also the response times were, the average response time was a minute less than last year, so...
Hey, good job.
Somehow got faster.
Good. Every minute matters.
The next report is a breakdown of the, of the number of calls per zone, or the, I'm sorry, this is the breakdown of the types of incidents for the, the entire area, our entire response area, and if you'll notice, the number of fires, rescues, and hazardous conditions are, pretty much make up the majority of the types of calls that we respond on. And then there are a few others that are good intents and false alarms that are the smaller portion of our call volume. And that, that continues through in the next couple reports, there's a breakdown between city calls and county calls, and that, those statistics are the same, the majority of the calls are fires, rescues, and hazardous condition calls. There's also a report in here that breaks down the number of calls per zone, and so what that does is you've been provided with a map. The map will tell you the area of town that, 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 the zone is, and the number of calls in that particular zone. In the, I don't, I didn't include twenty, yes, I did include twenty eighteen. I tried to include as many of the twenty eighteen ones as well, so you can compare where we were last year versus where we are this year.
Thank you.
And so those numbers, again, you know, a hundred and twenty-five this year for the, the three months versus a hundred and fifty last year. There isn't a specific zone that has, had a huge increase or decrease, it's just kind of sporadic in there, so there's no trends or anything for me to, to track. There's also an additional report in here that breaks up the incident type per zone, so that you can see in a particular area of town, the types of calls that are in that particular area of town. And so that breaks that down, and of course, you, you did have a, a map included in your, in your packet highlighting those, those areas.
Very good.
The other report that I included was an incident, incidents, total incident counts per month, and I included again twenty eighteen versus twenty nineteen, so you could see where the drop was. We're still on track, I think March was the biggest drop, which was like fifteen calls. That was the significant decrease, everything else was kind of spread between the other two months. And then our final reports, final, last three reports are the incident types by month. So I went ahead and broke down the, the month and the types of calls per month that we were receiving, and so that's that report. And then the very last one was just some interesting, for your information, report type things. Our busiest day is Wednesday, so I broke down the number of calls per day of the week, just so you could see that, for some reason, Wednesday is the day that things happen. That's our busiest day of the week. And then I went ahead and printed out another report that shows you the time of day, and so the total of calls for, the busiest time of the day is obviously, on here is the lunch hour, for some reason, everybody's out for lunch, or in a hurry, and accidents start to happen, people become a little bit more careless.
Awesome.
Then again, when school lets out, you see there's a big jump in, in the amount of calls. And then our quiet time is when everybody's asleep. And there's less people out in the streets, the, the less things are going to happen to us, so. But those were just extra reports that I wanted to include in there. I know you guys have a busy schedule, but I appreciate, appreciate you guys taking the time to hear our, our statistics, and if there are any questions, I'll open the door.
Counsel, any questions?
One. What is a good intent call?
A good intent call can mean there was a cat that was stuck in a tire, and we went and helped get the cat out of the tire. They're not really, I want to play them down because they're important, but they're, they don't really fall in any of those other categories, like a smoke report, or a fire, or a vehicle crash, or fire, or something like that.
Also, I can attest to y'all's response time. Keep up the great work. Y'all been, y'all got out there really quick when my security system decided to call the fire department. So, really quick, let me tell you. So, yeah, keep up the great work, and then again, in, in the training that y'all did with the...
Yes.
Here...
With A and M.
That's awesome. Keep up the great work. You know, you never know when a situation... You know, you never know when a situation arises that you might have that one day that you never thought you were going to use that training in your life that saved somebody else's. So keep up the good work, Chief and staff, for making sure that that stuff takes place.
And I apologize for being late tonight. I'm actually in training with a crew of other firefighters in San Antonio with the emergency manager.
Thank you for no excuses.
Yeah. Very good. That training was awesome. Those of you who don't, aren't familiar, Patrick facilitated a training, one of the first in the area, if, actually the first, right, Chief?
Yes.
And a branch of A&amp;M came in and specialized on horse rescue, animal rescue, using trailers, very specific to our area, which made perfect sense. Instead of getting training like in big cities, you know, where we may never experience, he targeted our area so that he can serve our citizens in full capacity. It was an excellent, excellent training. I went out there and they were doing, they were saving the horse, and it was really cool. Thank you so much, Patrick.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Any questions, counsel? Okay, no. All right. The time is now 8:41, and this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, and thank you everybody for coming in.
To adjourn, it would be a motion at table to adjourn. If there was, everything was acted on, then the meeting can just be adjourned, so, yeah, it'd be a good motion.
So would you like to make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Crisp?
No, just for, I don't think, I'm motion to adjourn.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, all in favor to adjourn?
Second.
Second? All in favor? Aye. The time is now 8:42, and this meeting is formally adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for being here and being with us today.